The Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all due diligence.
Just a brief announcement about open podium invitation. It's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each city council meeting, which typically occur the first and third Tuesday of every month. These open podiums take place from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter so that we can be better prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Tonight, once again, we have an HRA meeting, which is the Housing Redevelopment Authority. Did I say that right again? I hope so. Too straight, yes. Some cities have their HRA as a separate group, but here in Eden Prairie, the city council serves as the HRA, so we'll have an HRA meeting within the city council meeting. So I call the HRA meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Here.
Councilmember Narayan?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Toomey?
Here.
Chair Case?
Here. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting which we held on August 17th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the HRA minutes from August 17, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything to question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, we do have one order of business. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, members of the HRA. This is also an item you're going to be dealing with at the regular portion of the council meeting. It is that time of the year, September, when we need to set our preliminary tax levies. This is the meeting where we like to say that we have to set the ceiling. We have until the end of the year to finalize our levy in our budget, and you would have a budget adoption along with a public hearing at the last council meeting of the year in December. However, in September, we set our preliminary levy, and I have said at many, many other previous sessions that the prior levy of $200,000 for the tax levy has been the same for decades. Until tonight, we're proposing a small increase to $205,000, and that is mainly due to how the -- we tie our HRA levy to our staff costs related to housing and inspection programs. Obviously, as you know, we've had a lot of discussion at council meetings and workshops about many of the different resources that we bring to housing in Eden Prairie. We have many different funds and many different available programs to do many, many things with housing. This levy that we have for the HRA, we've specifically tied to our staffing costs. And so the proposal this evening for the HRA is to adopt that preliminary levy and budget for 2022 of $205,000.
Any questions? Is there a mo -- is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2022 property tax levy to be $205,000, accept the proposed 2022 budget of $205,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Is there someone like Councilmember Toomey that would make the motion to adjourn?
Sure. I'll move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Good job. All those -- I'll give you a longer one here later on, but that's just to get you started. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Mr. Gettle, we have an award and a couple donations this evening.
We do. I'm going to quick intro the award. Mr. Lothammer can cover the donations. The city, we've been very pleased to be a multiple-year recipient of the highest levels that you can achieve in the Green Step Cities program. And this 2021 was no different in terms of achieving step four and five of the Green Step Cities program. So I do see our regular award presenter in the audience, Diana McEwen with the Great Plains Institute. She's sitting next to our sustainability coordinator, Jennifer Hassabrook, and I believe Diana is doing the presentation.
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'm happy to be here again. It's always a pleasure to come down and plug in my EV right in front of the city hall and the charger. I appreciate it. You know, the city of Eden Prairie has been a long-term member of the Green Step Cities program, first joining, so 10 years ago in 2011. You're one of the early, early participants in the program and made steady progress over the years. So step two at 2012, step three in 2014. The first time you made step four was 2016, and then the first time you made step five was 2017. And you've done step four and step five every consecutive year since then. So six years at step four and five years at step five. And this year, we did have, you know, you guys were one of the early ones. You were one of 29 cities that were at step four this year and one of 25 at step five. So we're seeing other cities really step into that and really do that measurement. And so just a reminder that in step four, you set a baseline for improvements you want to see, and then in step five, if you make improvements on any three, then you get recognized at step five. So this year, as of now, you have 58 completed actions in the program, and the metrics obviously were for 2020 because 2021's not over. And the improvements that you made were community-wide emissions reductions in travel, waste, and energy, decrease in overall total citywide greenhouse gas emissions, an increase in the number of renewable -- installed renewable energy generation sites, an increase in the amount of renewable energy production for the city operations, a decrease in the VMT or vehicle miles traveled, community-wide, and an increase in the miles per gallon for the diesel fleet. And I also have been an admirer of -- I work, do a lot of work in electric vehicles, been watching the work that you've been doing, and I know Mr. Ellis has been doing a lot of work to get some -- trying to do some really innovative things with the fleet. And I'm really excited that you brought the Tesla on for the public safety team. I think that's a really exciting development.
They are, too.
Do they like it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, right? So just really outstanding work. And so I have your 2021 little blocks that you'll add to the award that you already have, and happy to take any questions, although not hard ones.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Great, we're just real proud of it, so thank you for being here to recognize and acknowledge us.
Absolutely. Happy to, you know, do photos. I really enjoyed the time that we were -- we had a giant picture of you and me and the mayor in the Sun Current. I have friends that were just super impressed. You made me famous.
Diane, I have one question.
Who said that? Yeah, yeah.
One question. Is 25, that's in Minnesota or in U.S.?
No, Green Step -- it's a Minnesota program. So 25 out of the 144 cities.
So we're pretty good. Thank you.
Oh, you're the top of the top.
Thank you.
I always wanted to know that.
I know. Oh, I know. I'm aware.
Thank you, Diane.
So, you know, we don't have the thing, so, you know, maybe we just kind of do this. So you go ahead. That's for my personal trophy. Thank you. No, congratulations to you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good work to our staff for organizing and documenting and following through. So to the councils all these years, back to Mayor Tara Lukens, I think. Goes back to her and then the council since then. So thank you, everyone. Mr. Gettle, do you want to, what, turn right to Mr. Lothammer?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Lothammer.
Your honor, council members, we're very fortunate to have the International School in our community, and we've had good partnerships with them over the years. They're coming forward this year to give $1,000 towards People Fest, which happened already this summer, two weeks of a celebration of culture and the cultures within our community. And we want to thank them and recognize them for the contribution.
Excellent. Council, is there a motion to accept?
I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation, the amount of $1,000 from International School of Minnesota to go toward People Fest, a community celebration of culture.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, Mr. Lothammer.
This next contribution is two parts, one from XL Energy and another one from the International School, $500 each, for a total of $1,000 towards the Arts in the Park. And that happened two weekends ago. Fairly good weather, not always the case, but we were overwhelmed by the amount of people that attended and glad to have our community coming out to that outdoor event and being a part of arts and culture within our community, as well as visiting some of our local artists who display and also sell their work there.
I was -- my wife and I and a couple grandchildren went. I was really impressed with the organization of it, so thank you to our staff, but also the booths by the various artists and craftspeople, and then there were food trucks. So it was just all, in all, a great afternoon. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the contribution in the amount of $1,000 for Arts in the Park from XL Energy 500 and International School of Minnesota 500.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Any items on the agenda you wish to question, poll, or anything to add, council or staff? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, minutes. Any questions about either the workshop held August 17th or the council meeting? If not, is there a motion to combine them and approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the council workshop held on August 17th and the council meeting minutes held on Tuesday, August 17th as well.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, consent calendar. Anything that any council member wishes to temporarily poll, to question, or poll on, to vote separately? If not, is there a motion to approve items A through J on the consent calendar?
I move approval of items A through J on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. I think we all got voted there. All right. I didn't hear any opposition. Public hearings, we have two this evening. Olympic Hills Golf Clubhouse Course Clubhouse. Mr. Gettle.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Our first public hearing is coming from Olympic Hills Golf Course Golf Club. The applicant is proposing an exterior facade remodel on their current clubhouse building. There are two additions that are also proposed, a small entrance, vestibule on the west side of the building, and approximately 1,400 square feet of storage space on the east side of the building. These changes include modifying the exterior elevations to a more modern facade that does exceed all of our city requirements. The -- this is a type of approval, site plan approval, considered a minor amendment, which means that it comes straight to the city council. So this is the first that the public is hearing about this, or will be in a public hearing format, as the planning commission did not consider this. The applicant is here to provide an overview of their project, and staff and the applicant can answer any questions that the city council would have.
Perfect. Come forward. Name and address or your job as well, I guess, while you're here.
Good evening. My name is Charles Peterson. I'm an architect with Aulik Design Build, A-U-L-I-K. We're at 5100 Edina Industrial Boulevard in Edina. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, as Rick pointed out, we have a small renovation to the club. The club was founded in 1969. The clubhouse has undergone several additions and remodels, and starting back in 2013 through 15, they remodeled the course, and the owner is here, and he's going to make a few remarks as well. But we've been working with city staff for a couple of years now on different projects and also talking about this renovation and small additions and the need for a comprehensive plan to come before you and make sure we're on the right path to bringing the facades up to city standards with current ordinance. So I'm going to introduce the owner here, and then after that, we've got a PowerPoint presentation that I can run through. So Dan Luther is here to speak.
Hi, welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for hearing us. I would especially like to thank Julie for all her hard work over the years. They came to us and they said, "We're tired of one-offs." And so we decided to come into it with a master plan and try to give you folks an idea of what we're going to look like going forward. To begin with, I've been there since the beginning. My mom dropped me off in the parking lot when it was all men's. So I've been around the club for a long, long, long time and really did not -- our family did not get involved as we bought the other investors in approximately 2011. And that's when we started getting involved on a comprehensive basis. And frankly, the golf course was tired. I'm a golfer, and we needed a fresh look. And in 2013, we embarked on building what we think is a state-of-the-art golf course. For an example, we have 35 acres of native areas. We use probably 8 to 10 million gallons less water a year than any other green grass golf course in the city or in the community, so we're really proud of that fact. We've got -- we've mitigated substantial water holdings throughout the entire golf course. We dredge out every one of our ponds. That was done in 2013. Underneath our parking lot, we've got three holding tanks that basically where everything else would run into the storm sewer now runs into the holding tanks, and then it sediments and moves into another pond, it sediments, it moves into another pond, it sediments, it moves into another pond, it sediments, and finally goes out in Yale Lake. So we think we have a pretty damn good rain garden. And we also harvest bees for the University of Minnesota, and so we try to be as economically as possible as we possibly can. But over the years, the golf -- the clubhouse itself is a tired old golf club, and I've tried to bring it up to standards, particularly in the inside. And with the help of Charlie and the Aulik Group, we came back with, as you have asked, for an entire overall look and recognizing that we have a lot of non-class A material in our old tired building. We wanted to bring it up to our site standards that we've created over the last four or five years and with a more contemporary look that we -- our goal really focuses to -- it's our vision, my family here, my son is my GM here, and he's here, and he's been on board since the beginning. Our goal is to bring Olympic Hills into a venue that can be -- where our members can be extremely proud, the city can be extremely proud, and our neighbors can be extremely proud of what we're trying to accomplish here. We don't do it with any debt. We don't do it with any assessments. We do it with basically, you can -- you're looking at an idiot up here, but basic, you're -- but it's passionate idiot. And it's something that my dad started, and hopefully my son's going to continue it going down the road, but we've got a couple of projects we want to finish, and one of them is the entire clubhouse. So I appreciate your time and the time that you've taken to listen to our proposal, and I hope you will approve it. Thanks so much.
Appreciate your family being here in Eden Prairie, so thank you.
I'm sorry.
We appreciate your family being here in Eden Prairie, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, how do we get this PowerPoint going here? Yeah, okay. All right, so as Dan said, they've been a long time, a community member, put a lot of hard work in with the city, and can't thank Julie and her team enough, Kevin Schmiee, we've done lots of projects with them, and it's always professional staff and nice to work with them. So, let's go. So this is just one of the parcels of Olympic Hills, but this is the parcel, it's approximately an 83-acre parcel that the clubhouse sits on. Up on Mount Curve Road there, you can see that top arrow. North is up, so the north facade is about 200 feet away from the neighbor across the street, and then on the southern facades, we're about 1,200 feet from the neighbors and 600 feet on the east side. So that northern facade, the entry facade, that's where the entry, the parking lot is. That's the closest to the street. Here's an aerial just showing generally the grounds right around the clubhouse. You can see the front entry, the circular drive there. We've identified kind of two phases that we would like to do this in. Phase one, starting this fall. Of course, balancing on your approval, but phase one is the largest of the two phases. It would be, you can see the storage addition over there on the right side, so the northeast corner, a small addition for, they hold a lot of events in their ballroom, so non-member events, weddings, things like that, retreats, meetings, corporate meetings, things like that. And with that, they have a lot of storage needs. Some of that stuff ends up in the basement here currently stuffed in the rafters of a maintenance building. It's kind of all over the place, so we're trying to give them a place where they can centralize that storage and take advantage of a new space in proximity to the ballroom and where most of that stuff is used. Facade around that side as well will be new. A lot of the, when we get to the calculations, you'll see a lot of wood siding. There's a bunch of wood siding, and of course, being built before the city ordinance with the Class 1, 75% requirement, we are far short on some of the facades meeting that 75%. And we'll show you the elevations here in a second. On the southern side, you can see that reddish area, that's outdoor terrace. And then if you go to the southwest corner, there's some covered pergola terrace. All that terrace, there's been some water intrusion in the concrete decking that's leached into the piers that are holding up that terrace. So our plan there is to strip the concrete topping, take the brick off the columns, have our structural engineer out there at demo, and inspect everything to make sure we don't have to do anything Herculean to the steel. If we, if he says we have to, then we will, but we want to have a solid plan to fix all the water intrusion and have it inspected. So that's, then that'll get a new surface on that, that'll have a better drainage system off the deck and down the columns to grade. If you see that little green roof area on the, kind of the western facade, southwestern facade there, that is over the pro shop, the golf shop that was built, I believe that was done in 2015. That area and the area directly to the north, that is the old pro shop with the pitched roof. Is there a laser pointer on this? No. So that section right there where she's pointing, that's the old golf shop up at the main level. Currently, that's being used for a lot of the storage needs as well. So that's phase two. That green roof area would be turned into a members terrace. We'd keep about 475, 500 square feet of planter to keep that green soft scape up on the terracing. And then that area under the roof, that roof would be taken down, changed, and that program in there would be kind of a lounge area, a TV, some couches, fireplace, spot for the members to sit down after a round of golf and hang out, or it could be used for some of those smaller events as well. So the, I neglected to say the storage addition, I think was pointed out, but about 1,425 square feet on that east side. The phase two with that members lounge, that would have a small entry vestibule, about 160 square feet. And those, both those additions would be on helical anchors, so not a traditional foundation. They're helical anchors screwed into the ground and then built upon that to really minimize the disturbance to the land. And you can see there's wetland in close proximity to here, so we're looking to disturb as little of the land around the clubhouse as we possibly can. Move on here. So this is just the plan, kind of showing those areas, the phasing. Some of the materials, you can see in the top left, I apologize, it's a little small. I don't know if it's bigger on your screen. The top left is the golf shop. You can see we introduced limestone, rough-faced limestone to the clubhouse back when we did that project. Some black detailing for the flashings and awnings on that building. If you go to the right, you can see the entry fountain that was done later. Again, we brought the limestone in and the black metal detailing. And then if you go below that is a hitting building that was done 2018 on the driving range, and again, that introducing the limestone. And there's also some Endicott brick that was introduced at that front entry project and this hitting building. All Class 1 materials, durable, long-lasting. And like Dan said, it is a tired building, but we're trying to bring it up with sustainable materials and durable, long-lasting materials that are also going to get us to that Class 1 threshold that we need to meet. So here we are in the north facade. You can see that top-left image is the view from the front entry as you would enter up the hill to the parking lot. So pretty heavily screened, you don't see much of the building there. You can see we've entered that bottom-left picture, we've got, again, that limestone carries through from the pro shop into a retaining wall there. You can see on the front entry, we've got some of the Endicott brick showing up on that facade. And this is the north facade, I would say the most visible from any of the public streets. We were, I think, in compliance there. We're, I think, meeting 82% Class 1 materials, and we're going up to 88%, I believe. So the most visible facade, we're already in compliance, so we're just improving that. You can see on this next slide below is the existing elevation. The upper is the proposed. You can see that storage addition on the left side with the dark kind of charcoal Endicott brick and glazing on it. The gray material is a terracotta material that we're introducing, just so we're not -- we didn't want to have too much of the limestone or the Endicott brick. We needed some contrast, so we floated several materials. so we floated several materials past Julie and the staff, and they said the terracotta would be accepted as Class 1, very durable, long-lasting facade, we can get good drainage behind and with that facade, and introducing some more glass in that facade area just to the left of the front entry. And then you can see on the right side, that would be phase two, that members lounge again, with the small addition being on the very right side there, the little glass box, just to give the members an entrance, if there's a wedding event going on and a lot of guests are being dropped off at the front, or valeting, or coming in that main entry, the members would be able to sneak up, kind of a, not hidden, it's not a hidden sidewalk, but it would be something that the members would know we're there, and they could go into the members' area without wading through the wedding event. So move on to the west facade, you can see the top-left image, that's the limestone retaining wall, you can see the pitched roof of that, the old pro shop that would be coming down, and in the bottom rendering, you can see the terracotta panels, more of a modern box there with the entry on the side, and then that green roof that we're converting to partially planted and partially taking advantage of the members' terrace, kind of a amenity deck there. This facade was at 68% Class 1 materials, and we've gotten that up to 76% with the proposed addition, and that, the small addition and the reworking of the members' lounge. So, south, the image up in the top-left, you can see there's pergola, that was, I think, a 2016 project that we did, that's over the members' dining terrace. So just to provide a little bit of shade, we put a fixed pergola out there, it doesn't operate. In the last five years, we've researched and found numerous other products, and we've found a product that is automated and can articulate, give the club some shade out on those terraces, protects from rain, and can also, it's engineered for snow loading, so it can be closed in the winter, just to help extend the time out on that terrace for the members and guests, and it also helps on the wedding side of things, they have onsite a little wedding venue down by that wetland, and you can imagine in clement weather, the Plan B can be a little bit of a scramble, so giving them that amenity, covering the terrace, will help keep guests cool and also help them keep the rain off and let people still enjoy that, the views of the course while they're out on the terrace. So that's the south elevation, this was probably the, I think, the worst-performing existing facade at 40% Class 1 materials, and we're bringing that up to 78% with the materials we'd be cladding with. Up at the top, the rendering, or the elevation, you can see on the right side, again, you can see that storage building, it's not at the front, or it's not on par with the main part of the facade, that's set back, kind of at the north edge of the building, but we have glass on that facade as well. So final facade, the east side, you can see kind of prominently in the top-left picture, the pier, the brick piers I was talking about, and the water intrusion with that, we're going to be shortening those piers down to kind of the deck level, and adding glass railing around that terrace as well, just to help further promote those views to the course from the terrace and the interior of the clubhouse. And then you can see on the bottom, the rendering, we're planning on planting a half a dozen coniferous trees somewhere in the four-to-six-inch caliper range to screen that storage building, that's the 18th green in that location, so we're planning on screening that a little bit with plantings, and I think that's meeting the landscape requirements for the project. There's the east elevation, again, 56% existing, and we're going to bring that to the 75% mark. And then these are just some more broken-down calculations, so with that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions of the proponent or staff? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council tonight on this issue or this proposal? Seeing none, could I have maybe a motion to go ahead and, if you wish, close the public hearing and go ahead and move the resolution, if that's your pleasure?
I move to close the public hearing and adapt the resolution for site plan review on 82.31 acres.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say quickly that it looks very nice, you know, it looks like some upgrades that are going to be appreciated by all the people who use it or live near it, so thank you.
Yeah, our lack of conversation is no indication of our enthusiasm for this, it's just that it really is a straightforward project, and we appreciate that, and we're pleased that you're reinvesting on this grade of an amenity within Eden Prairie, so thank you. Without any further discussion, then we've made the motion and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, congratulations, and continuing welcome to our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that. All right, Johnson Ridge, Mr. Gettrich.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, the next public hearing is an applicant that is requesting to develop six single-family homes, six single-family lots at 9995 Bennett Place. This is a parcel that is on Bennett Place, located south of Pioneer Trail, and it currently contains a single-family home that would be demolished before construction would begin. The property is surrounded by other single-family development, and with a density of approximately 2.86 units per acre, this project is consistent with the low-density residential guiding. The Planning Commission reviewed and unanimously voted recommendation to approve the project at their August 9th council meeting. The applicant is here to provide an overview of their project, staff and the applicant can answer any questions you have prior to or after public hearing.
Great, please come forward. Give your name, and if you, I'm not sure we need the town you live in, but definitely your company or whatever.
Hi, my name's Harold Worrell, I'm the applicant for Lake Town Builders.
Great.
I don't know if, hopefully someone else is running the... So the property is located roughly 2.6 miles south of Eden Prairie Road, 1.5 miles west of 169, and south of Pioneer Trail. It is surrounded by single-family homes, some of which are R1135 variety, and some are R122. Just a basic overall site description, the property is L-shaped, and it's flanked on two sides by a city outlot, the two small sides of the L, sorry, I didn't have to drive last time. I'm not used to this, curveball. Let me go to the next page here. So if you look at that as an L laying on its side, there's a city outlot on the north end of the property, or towards the top of the property, and the land falls within the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District. We have received conditional approval, and we believe we've answered the final questions that remained on the Watershed's list. We propose the name Johnson Ridge, we've named it for the family that owned the property and pretty much lived out their lives there. Johnson's built the home that exists on the property today. Harold Johnson was a war veteran, and there's a large ridge on the property, so to honor the conditions of the property and the name of the owner, it just seemed fitting, Johnson Our property, along with the city outlot, will equal 2.25 acres of development. The outlot was obtained by the city when the Moorhead Development was created, its purpose was to serve as a road for the future development of our property, and currently serves as a driveway for the homeowner at 9977 Bennett Place. See, I'm not good at driving this thing. Existing site conditions, it is a heavily wooded site with mature trees, that also is heavily wooded with buckthorn and invasive tree species. The topography is quite variable, it's about 38 feet higher at the center of the property than it is on the southwest corner. Currently, there are no swales on the property, or anything keeping sheet water or runoff rainwater within the confines of the property, the water runs off to the southwest and to the northeast. The soil is mostly sandy and a sandy mix called Millardy Howeick. Midwest Natural Resources was retained, to do a wetland determination and concluded no wetlands exist on the property, the city came out and concurred that finding. MNR was also out to report on endangered species, there were no endangered, threatened, or special-concerned species on our site. The existing home is located over on the southeast corner of the property. Our plan, based on the site contours, would incorporate three walkout and three lookout homes, water retention ponds and swales at property lines to direct and filter surface water, retaining walls to accommodate the grade between the existing adjacent home and our proposed community street, as well as near the ponds. We've incorporated sustainability features of electric-vehicle-ready garages and rain barrels, and we have a comprehensive tree replacement plan that we believe is also a sustainable tree replacement plan. As regards to comprehensive plan zoning and waivers, the land is guided, low-density residential, our proposal of six lots, based on the quantity of land we have, meets this criteria. We're proposing a planned unit development with waivers, if you look up at the screen, you'll see I've got some waivers highlighted there. Due to lots four, five, and six being more narrow than the minimum 55-foot at the bulb of the cul-de-sac at the right-of-way, they do open up expansively after the right-of-way, and then the depth of 92 feet as opposed to 100, we have lot three, let's see, lot three actually enters into the cul-de-sac, which pushes our property back and reduces our depth, and then the grading of the street due to where Bennett sits and the existing homes, we're requesting 9.11 grade for the road. We intend to combine a combination of single-story and two-story homes, individual homes will vary in architecture, materials, and colors. These homes could range in size from a small rambler with an unfinished basement to a large two-story, probably 18 to 2,000 square feet up to 5,000 square feet. There was a really large turnout at our community meeting, community that is a pretty tight-knit community down there, they're very engaged, involved, and they care about what's going on, and we're excited to be a part of it. I'd like to thank you all for your time this evening and your consideration.
Great, thank you. Before I open it up to you all, and then open it up to the public, I'm just, I'm looking for a map that actually shows the driveway connection on 9977, and the house sits really close to the new cul-de-sac, is that accurate? And then right now, they have an easement across the dirt, I drove in there, I don't know, months ago, but there's a dirt gravel road, but, so 9977, that's been their way to get in and out on that?
No, sir, so the gravel road that you drove in on is the road, is actually the driveway for 9959, sorry, Bennett Place.
Got it.
Our property. Just to the north of that, there are two driveways side by side. The one driveway, the southernmost driveway of those two driveways, or the one right adjacent to our property, is actually part of the outlot that the city owns.
Okay.
And that's been used as a private driveway.
And, okay, just...
It's actually asphalt.
So that will sit on the formal legal defined new property, though, but have an easement, or does it sit on its own, is the division of the properties on the south side of that driveway?
Sorry, I think I missed a part of that.
Sorry, I wasn't really...
I think Mr. Ellis can answer, but I think the mayor's asking what will happen to the driveway that's there, I think the answer is it'll be part of the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Yes, the driveway will be replaced by a street, and so instead of having a very long driveway, they will just be right off the end of the cul-de-sac.
But, so currently, the way the division of the two properties, does that driveway sit on its own property north of that, or was it on an easement of this property?
It is sitting on the city's outlot, where the future cul-de-sac would go.
We had an outlot that's not just an easement, but we had an outlot in there.
We knew that someday this property would develop at the right time, and so we secured a portion of that future cul-de-sac that would allow this development to happen.
Understood, that's what I was trying, I was missing there, I get it completely, thank you so much. Counsel, any other questions? And we'll have a public, open up the public here in just a moment, but any, do you want to have the public hearing first, or, it's up to you, go ahead if you have a question?
I just have a question about the tree replacement, that, it seemed to be one of the questions that the Planning Commission had for you, and it said it was going to be modified before it came to us, and we have this right here, did you...
That should be the most current and up-to-date one.
The landscape, so can you explain a little bit of that to me, are the black dots the trees that are leaving?
The black dots are the trees to remain.
Oh, and the other ones are the, okay.
Everything that's outlined with an initial are the new trees coming.
Everything that's outlined...
So you see what looks like a green outline of a canopy, those are the new trees.
Those are the new trees?
Correct.
And the black ones are staying as well?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My pleasure.
Let's go ahead and open up as a public hearing, then we'll continue, if you have questions, you can add in more comments, counsel, so if you want to take a seat for a little bit, and we may need to call you back up, but thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this project this evening? So counsel, since I'm not sure if you have more questions, let's just go ahead and close the public hearing only portion of it, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, counsel, any further, you may not have any, I'm just assuming that you might, anyone have further questions or comments at this point? Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the way the project looks, as far as the rendering is very sharp. I got a question here, I'm big on, when it comes down to heritage trees, I understand as far as, you know, a lot of times it's just on the wish list to be able to save what you can save, I'm looking at a 36-inch tree right there, no other way of really saving that tree?
36 inches, pretty good size.
Sir, I believe you're referring to the, there's one heritage tree right at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Number 27, I believe, is your number.
In the right-of-way, we don't see, unfortunately, another way to be able to save that heritage tree.
Fortunately, I was anticipating that answer, I thought that, you know...
We wanted to save that tree, there's been a lot of interest in that tree.
Yeah, it's a very nice project, thank you.
My pleasure. My pleasure.
Counsel, anything else?
Just a comment. Just a clarification question. Did I hear that some of the houses up to 5,000 square feet? Does that include the basement or without the basement?
Yes, sir. We assume they could be that large with a finished basement.
That's pretty good. The question I have, just a comment, I really appreciate that you are provisioning the power for the chargers and so on. It's very commonly come up here. We asked for it, so you already seen some of the previous comments, I think. And so I really started, I really appreciate that you provisioning that to the building.
Thank you, sir.
And I did not read, did, are they going to be prewired or actually some type? I guess the outlet's difficult because you don't know how to anticipate changing technology. But is there just a pre-wiring for electric vehicle?
Essentially, so electric vehicle ready is the wiring is there, the connection's not made.
Got it.
So you will have 220 or something voltage?
Correct.
Be there, so the homeowner doesn't have to pay to have that all the way back to the basement somewhere.
Right. You don't necessarily have to have an electrician come back in and wire it to the panel wherever that may be.
That's what we've been asking. So thank you for proactively doing that.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, if there are no further questions, would somebody make a motion? We've already closed the public hearing, so it's from the second bullet forward. Councilmember Toomey. I promised you a long one before the meeting ended, so here we go.
Excellent. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on 2.1 acres, approve the first reading of the ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers, and a zoning district change from R1-22 to R1-9.5 on 2.1 acres. Adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat to divide one lot into six lots on 2.1 acres. Direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and authorize the issuance of an early land alteration permit for Johnson Ridge at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined in the permit.
I second that.
Counsel, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, welcome to Eden Prairie. Congratulations. All right, payment of claims. Any items that you wish to question? If not, is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve the payment of claim as submitted.
Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Getchow, I think you're next on the agenda, the certification of the 2022 property tax levy.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. You may recall from the HRA meeting that we need to set our preliminary levy for 2022. I think this is, I think this falls somewhere in step seven or eight of a 10-step budget process that you are all very familiar with. If you think back to the beginning of the year, we actually began our budget process when we completed our biannual survey of our residents. So we were able to have some strategic planning sessions with the city council. We were able to review the results of our community survey, and we were able to start building out a budget in the summer, spring and summer of this past year. And so you held a workshop in July to receive some, at that time, some of the detailed updates on the budget that's being built for both 22 and 23. We do a two-year budget, but each year, we have to adopt a tax levy and a budget for that given year. So that's the focus of the action tonight is on 22. We'll come back again with 23 another year from now, even though we've started entering those numbers. It's probably important to note that we've had some overarching goals in our community and in our budget process. First and foremost, our residents want us to maintain a high level of service across all of our departments, police, fire, public works, parks and recreation, and even community development and a lot of our internal operations. It's expected that we continue to deliver a high level of service, and I think at a reasonable price. And I'll mention that briefly, even though the detailed presentation on this budget will be more toward the end of the year. But all this information, these, the packet here is all available online, as was the July update. But that's one of the most important things that we want to do. We also want to bring in a balanced budget as well. So when we were reporting on, we were at, in July, we still had some work to do in terms of pulling back some expenditures and looking at some revenue. So those updates are in the packet as well. I am pleased to report that even though we don't need to adopt this until December, we have a balanced budget right now. And I think for the past, at least decade or so, the preliminary levy and budget you have set, even though it's the ceiling, has been the budget that you have ended up adopting because a lot of the work has been done. But that being said, there is room to maneuver, and you're only setting the ceiling on your levy right now. A few of the highlights, and again, this is all in the packet, and I know the council has heard about this, but we are adding some positions to our public safety areas in this budget in 2022. We're going to be contracting with Hennepin County to provide a social services outreach position. We are going to be adding an additional dispatcher. We have quite a bit of updated IT expense, especially with the new body camera program we have. We plan on hiring another assistant fire chief in 2022 to assist with emergency management. And we're also looking at an additional forestry position. Trees have been obviously an important issue in our community. So those are probably the highlights as it relates to staffing. We are a service organization, so more than two-thirds of our budget is our employees. It's the benefits and the pay of the employees, so that's a big driver within the budget itself. The overall, at least at this time, this kind of changes by the month, but as you can see in the packet, the overall levy and tax impact that we have is in the, kind of in the 5% range. Actually, 4.7% is what we're looking at for a levy increase. And I think you may recall a proposed levy increase. I think you may recall from some reporting on some of our peer cities, I think there are only maybe two cities of similar size that are contemplating a levy lower than that. So we're actually below the average of the proposed levies in MLC cities or the southwest metro. We do have a debt levy that is flat once again, and we're looking at a budget, an overall budget, that is 4.8%. And the levy and budget are two separate items because the levy is what your property tax amount is. The budget is the total amount. So the proposed total budget in 22 is $55,617 approximately, and the levy is $40,607. The tax impact, at least at this time, to the median-valued home is about $92 or $82, I believe. And that increase, annual increase, is also due to the increase in the value of the home. So the median-valued home is also increased. It also appears, though, I think this will be the third or fourth consecutive year, that a commercial property in Eden Prairie will see a drop in their actual taxes. So we use an example of a $2 million commercial property. But the residential, the median-value residential home is now for 2022 valued at $430,000, and that's an increase from, I think it was $415,000 or $416,000. So that $82 a year is also attributable to the value. I'll note that the rate, the rate that the city taxes at is going up less than 1%, but that rate will still actually be lower than what our rate was in 2018. So our city tax rate in 2018 was just over 32%. It's gotten down to 31.5%. It's going back up to 32%, but it's still lower than the 32% rate from 2018. So, you know, four to five budgets later, the city rate is unchanged, which is, you know, one of the more important pieces of this. The idea that your rate of tax has not changed in five years is due to both our growth and our market value, but also in having very moderate budget increases. So as I said earlier, Mayor and council, we will, what would happen is, following your approval of a preliminary levy, this is going to generate a statement to all taxpayers in Eden Prairie, and they're going to get a statement probably sometime in November that's going to state what their proposed taxes on their home for 22 for both the city share. What I'm talking about here is just the city share. So when you get your tax statement, that's a quarter, about one-fourth of your total tax bill. You have the county and the school district, other taxing jurisdictions, the Metropolitan Council, the watershed districts. Taxpayers are going to get the statement that's going to have all of those proposed taxes. And then all of those taxing jurisdictions are going to have public hearings. Ours happens to be the first Tuesday in December. School might have a different date. County might have a different date. And then everyone in the, every taxpayer will be invited to that meeting. And then following that, that will be when you will take action on the final budget in December. But at this time, as I said, it's a resolution in front of you to set the proposed tax levy and proposed budget. You're also setting the hearing date, and you're also consenting to the HRA levy that was completed earlier this evening. And I can certainly answer any questions you have, but as noted before, there's been quite a bit of discussion. We also have future workshops scheduled, I believe, in November and leading up to December to talk about some of our enterprise funds and other areas of our budget that are not tied to the tax levy.
Councilmember, I want to make sure I was on. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, thank you for all the work that we've been exposed to with all input that we've been able to give you over the last nine months, because that's important to keep the council as part of it. I also approve of the fact that we have a budget that's going to keep us in the lowest quarter of taxes in the whole metropolitan area, and that, too, is important while keeping our services excellent. So it looks good.
Any other? Councilmember Freiberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to just piggyback that. When you could add, keep our services at the same level that we have, plus what you're adding. Good job. I mean, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing on that.
Others? Councilmember Narayan? Did you raise your pen?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Did you? I thought you did.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of repeat what Councilmember Freiberg and Nelson said. It's really great to be part of the process, so we understand. Maybe it's difficult for the residents sitting out there to understand all the things we just mentioned. I just want to, just going to repeat, I think what I heard is, so the total tax I pay, 32% goes to the city. The rest of them go to the Hennepin County and the school and something else, right? Am I right?
Right. Councilmember Narayan, I believe that percentage is closer to maybe 25%. I'll have an exact number on this budget, but, correct. So your total property tax bill?
Right.
Your total bill, because people don't think about breaking it out into the city. They'll say, I pay, you know, $8,000, $7,000 in taxes, and the city is a fourth of that, roughly.
Yeah, so 25% only, that five of us, we have control of that 25%.
Correct.
So also, I think it's very important to highlight that we have one of the highest rating in terms of bond, AAA bond rating and so on, that because of our financial discipline. So we have been doing this multiple years to maintain this. This is not the first time. The last example I kind of like to take is, if somebody has a house, $400,000 house, with this budget, how much more approximately dollar amount that their levy go up?
For the median-valued home, I'm assuming that their value went up maybe 4%. The home value went up 4%. And the taxes will go up, I believe, just over 5%, which is $82 a year.
So quite significant, quite small compared to overall the value go up as well. Just want to point it out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, the gain, it's hard to say, but if the new total's 82, it's possible on a $400,000 valued home, it would have gone up $6, $8, I think. Does that sound about right?
That's correct, Mayor. And I think, again, you know, you may have a home that will go up in value maybe 1% or 2%, and that won't be an $82 increase in taxes. It'll be lower. It's just the median-valued home price this year versus the price last year. Not every home is going up that percent.
So that because of the market value of the home and the...
Yes.
Not the percentage causing it, because our home value became more valuable because we have a better city and better schools. Right? That's the reason the value go up.
It also depends on the state formula, though, right?
It does.
And with commercial going down, that's going to potentially hurt residential prices possibly, because we all, we share. So we have to divide the $43,102,554 among all the tax base components, commercial, residential.
Mayor, you bring up an excellent point. So as I mentioned, our rate, the rate that we tax properties at is the same, but if the value in residential went up more than commercial, which it did last year, COVID had an impact on commercial property, retail, that the residential property is taking a little bigger amount of the share, Mayor. That's a really good point. So if not, you know, what values go up and what types of property has an effect here as well. That's a great point.
Councilmember Toomey?
I don't really have much more to add, except thank you, you know, for all the work that's been done, and I look forward to future meetings and having, you know, this budget process finished.
So I can't top what Mr. Getchow shared. I just want to underscore a couple points, that tonight, we're merely setting the very maximum amount of dollars, $43,102,554, that we are going to tax entities across the city. That is driven by a budget that through painstaking two-year process, but really a lot of work this year as well, we've set at $55,617,390. That has fees in there, other governmental, not a lot of that, but other sources of revenue. But the tax portion, that's $43,102,554. That's going to drive the tax that each of us pay, but then that's driven by these other components of the state setting, the formula, how much your individual house went up or didn't, that kind of a thing. But tonight, we're just setting that maximum cap. In December, we could choose to lower that maximum cap, which would have a rippling, rolling effect on other properties, how much they pay. But again, typically in the last several decades, we've not changed it because we do such a good budgeting process that we've kept it consistent. All right, counsel, is there, let's see, did we, no, we have not made the motion. So is there someone that would make the motion to adopt the resolution certifying the 2022 property tax levy?
Moved to adopt the resolution that certifies the proposed 2022 property tax levy to be $43,102,554, and sets December 7, 2021, as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment, and accepts the proposed 2022 budget of $55,617,390, and consents and approves the HRA tax levy of $205,000.
Sir, second?
Second.
You can pick on that one. Choose either one. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we unanimously passed. I've often said that the budget, and of course, that drives the levy, is the singular document that displays the, I guess, the personality of the council, or at least the values of any council. You can go back in decades, and you can see what did that council value back then by looking at what they chose to spend on behalf of their residents based on politics, based on what we've been told we should value and spend on. So it's a very important process. We treat it very seriously. We have great staff that help... We have great staff that help walk us through this. So, Mr. Getchow, thank you, and all of our financial staff sitting in the back as well. So we appreciate your work and your help on this. All right, I believe that is all to come before the council this evening. Should we recognize our, Sue, would you do that, please? I think we need to recognize our financial staff sitting in the back. Put the camera on them, the whole thing.
Yeah, put a camera on them. And, yeah, no, absolutely. When Councilmember Narayan was talking about our bond rating, our financial policies, our accounting, you know, that's all due to that entire division, as well as putting all the documents and reports together and taking in all of the information from the departments as the budget's being prepared. They're top-notch, best in the state. So, yeah, I can't, yeah, we'll put the camera out in the crowd. They're out in the crowd.
Thank you.
We don't need to look at it.
Thank you so much for your work.
There they are.
All right. If there's speech? No? Okay. If there's nothing else to come before the councils, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
So, real quick, because she's so happy, she's so happy I didn't say anything on camera. But you might have another meeting in you yet, Sue, but you aren't going to be here much longer.
When is yours? When is your last stay?
September 30.
Oh, my gosh. Wait a minute.
I'm retiring.